Someone under Citizens comments, Matt Ford. And Matt, I saw you earlier, I think you may have been in the lobby. Matt, if you will come forward.
Hello, I'm Matt.
I'm Matt. Hey, Matt.
Hey, how are you?
Great, that's okay. And if you will, just state your name and address for us with record.
Yes, my name is Matt Ford, and I live at 203 Todd Lane. It is an honor to be here again, it's a great joy of mine. And, and I mean it, there is no other town council I would want to put you guys up to any other one in America, and I'd pick you guys a million times over. And I wanted to say, Vice Mayor Atkins, I appreciate your apology the other day. And I don't know if you remember this, but nine years ago, you extended grace to me, and it changed my life. And so I'm eager, very willing, to do the same for you. I'm so glad that you're here, and I want you to know, I believe in you, and Smyrna believes in you. And, yes, sir. And I know that the scripture rings true, he who is in us is greater than he is in the world. And who is in us tonight is Christ. He is my message. Not only is he the King of Smyrna, and not only does the scripture command all civil leaders to surrender to him, but it also teaches us that he created the realm of government in the first place. All government belongs to him. Before the flood, God would restrain sin by banishment, and that's what happened with Cain. But Cain did not die, and sin continued to grow and grow in the world. And so the way that God ushered in vengeance was by a worldwide flood. And God promises that he would never do that again. So what he established, instead of a flood and natural disasters primarily to only work through, he established a government. And he saves one family, Noah, and then he gave that family laws. And what he said to them was, if you shed man's blood by man, your blood will be shed. And that right there was the very first governmental law. And it was given to Noah and his family. And Noah became the herald of promoting good and punishing evil. And in Genesis 6, he also promised us with a rainbow that he would never flood the earth again. And with that rainbow, there's a promise of that he is good, and he is merciful, but it also promises us that he has vengeance. And it will be carried out by human means now, no longer only by natural disasters. Earthly governments now do his bidding. That's what Apostle Paul is speaking about in Romans 12, when he says that government authorities are instituted by God. Paul calls them servants for good, teaching us that authorities bear God's sword. They are the avengers of God's wrath to the wrongdoer, and that's why we as civilians aren't vigilantes. We have to, vengeance is of the Lord, and so we give it to him. So it is, governments are created by God. And tonight, I ask that we acknowledge the crown rights of Jesus Christ. We adopt a town charter with a religious test. So it is time for Smyrna to take her next step to being who God made her to be, a city on a hill. So let us confess the supremacy of Christ in our courts and town halls. Let Christ be her king. The coronation occurred 2,000 years ago in heaven, and it was more beautiful than any artist could sketch.
Amen, Mr. Mayor.
He went to Zion with a triumphal entry, and I'll end with this. The gates of heaven, you could hear them cry out that he was mighty in battle and the Lord of glory. So let us today know that he is not only the King of Saints, but he is the King of nations. He is the King of state and the King of the church. So let us also, as a city on a hill, coronate him as the King of Smyrna, Tennessee, in our love.
Thank you, Matt.
May the Lord bless you and keep you, and may his face shine down upon you. May he lift up his candidacy. Give him peace.
Thank you. Jeff, can you talk a little bit about charter being changed and that sort of thing?
Sure. First of all, I respect Mr. Ford for being brave and coming up and speaking to us several times. I find that personally admirable. I do want to say, though, the proposal that he's making is really born out of state and federal constitutional provisions. As you recall to explain, as Mr. Ford eloquently spoke in his first presentation, he spoke of the National Reform Association from 1864, if you remember him talking about them approaching Abraham Lincoln. And they approached President Lincoln back then because they wanted him to support a constitutional amendment to make some additions to the preamble of the Constitution. And as a town, or as a city, even the county, we are, the only authority we have is because of legislation. Our charter is state legislation. So I believe that he would be, his proposal should be through the state representatives, state senate, also the federal representatives and federal senate. We can get him those names and contact numbers and all of those things. But it will take a change of Article 1, Section 3 of the Tennessee Constitution. It'd also take a change with the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment with the Constitution. But that would be the proper vehicle. So I'm not saying he's wrong for what he's asking, that's just the proper vehicle to go about such a change.
And can you get him those names if he would like to have those?
Sure, be more than happy.
Good, thank you. Okay, I am going to call our meeting to order. And tonight, Chaplain Bill Hunter with the Smyrna Police Department is with us. And then our pledge is going to be done by our Town Engineer, Charles King. If you all will stand with us, please.
I'd like to ask everyone to please bow. Almighty God, I believe. I believe you love me, and I believe you love each one of us that are here tonight. And we pray tonight because we are people of faith. We believe that you care for each and every one of us. Lord, we need you this day because so many things are happening. We're in trouble, so much darkness, so many storms, so many, so many things swirling about us. Lord, we need you. I want to take time to thank you for our council, those that serve, for our police officers, for our firemen, for our paramedics, for the doctors, the nurses, so many people that work and serve the people of Smyrna. Bless them and keep them and keep them safe. Father, in the very first book of the Bible, it begins with the words, "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth." And as we continue to read in that chapter, we find God making these various animals, the various trees, the various plants. He makes man. And each time he makes something, each time he creates something, he says, "It's good. It's good." Today, I want things to be good. And I believe that God wants things to be good. If our world is to be good, it's going to take all of us working together. If you believe, Lord, and I know that you do, and those of us who trust you, please be with us. Please help us. Please forgive us, and please strengthen us. I pray this prayer in Christ's name, and amen.
Please face the flag and join the fates in allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Chaplain and Charles. Ms. Diane, if you will do roll call, please.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Morell.
Present.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilwoman Sullivan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Moving on to item three is approval or corrections of the minutes from the September 8, 2020, September 4, 2020, and September 29, 2020 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
They are in order, ma'am.
Counsel, any additions or corrections to any of these? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Item four is correspondence or communication. Brian, anything for correspondence and communications tonight?
No, ma'am, not a single.
Okay. Awards and recognitions. Brian, anything from you?
We have two.
I've got these. So tonight, we have two individuals here with us, one from Stewart's Creek High School and one from Smyrna High School. We have Kaitlyn Carr from Stewart's Creek, and we have Jose Serritos-Aravelo, how'd that do? Okay, good, from Smyrna High School. Now, I want to tell you a little bit about these two individuals. These individuals are National Merit Scholarship Program Award winners. This is an academic competition for recognition of scholarships that began in 1955. Approximately 1.5 million high school students enter the program each year. Students enter the program by taking the PSAT as high school juniors. Of the 1.5 million entries, 16,000 students are recognized as semifinalists. This year, both Smyrna High School and Stewart's Creek High School had students recognized as semifinalists. So we extend our congratulations to both Kaitlyn, a junior at Stewart's Creek High School, and Jose, a junior at Smyrna High School, on this outstanding academic accomplishment. And we wish you luck as you work to meet the requirements to advance to the National Merit finalist standings. Now, I'm sure some of you may have been, did you all, any of y'all receive this honor?
It's been a while.
Oh, it's been a while, you don't remember? Gotcha, gotcha. Well, we want to tell you how proud we are of you, and we have a little something to show how proud we are and a little bit of recognition. So counsel, if you will join me down front, if you will put your mask back on, and we're going to take some pictures and do some presentations. And Kaitlyn and Jose, if you'll come forward. Brian?
I'm coming.
I'm going to have to turn around so you can see. Counsel, if you'll join me on each side. Let's see what Mark, I will let you present that one for me. And Raquel, will you present that one for me? And in addition to certificates, we also have keys to the city. So there you go. The only other key that I know is the one that Jerry has to the bathroom, but I think this will get you in a little bit more than the bathroom. So we just want to tell you congratulations. We are so proud of you and what great representatives of the town of Smyrna. And so Caitlyn, tell me a little bit, like, do you think you know what you might want to major in, or where you might eventually want to go to school?
I haven't decided on a school yet, but I'm probably going to major in engineering.
Very cool, good. Jose, what about you?
I have not decided on a school either, but I'm going to major in physics.
Oh, counsel, was this anything y'all majored in? No, me either. Okay, so. We'll get up and pictures. You guys could scoot in just a little bit so I can get everybody, everybody a little closer. That would be great. That's perfect. Parents, are y'all good? Also want to thank, also want to thank both principals for being here. We appreciate you all taking the time to come out and also honor these two students. I know you guys are very proud of them, and we just want to thank you all for what you all do for our community every day. I know it's a tough job, but we can't tell you how much we appreciate it. So thank you. Thanks, you all. Thank you, congratulations. I know that the future is bright here in the town of Smyrna when we have individuals like that in our system. So thanks to Kaitlyn and Jose for coming out tonight. We'll move on now to item six, which is our consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing individual discussion. If there is an item that counsel would like to pull off and vote on individually, we can do that. I do like to read the consent agenda so those in the audience, as well as those at home, know exactly what we're voting on. We have quite a few items on the consent agenda, so if you will, bear with me. First is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a grant from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office relative to the police department overtime and equipment. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Central Square for software maintenance for the electronic citations. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a maintenance contract with Motorola for the town's radio system. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to rank Thomas and Hutton first in the RFQ process for the Florence Road sidewalk project. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with SEC Engineering relative to engineering services to evaluate drainage issues within the vicinity of the Rock Springs Road and I-24. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract amendment with TDOT relative to the State Route 1 from Jackson Street to Sam Davis Road. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract amendment with TDOT relative to the weekly lane intersection at Swan Drive in Smyrna. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Sessions Paving Company relative to the construction of State Route 1, South Lowry Street, North Lowry Street to Sam Davis Road project. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Paul Microfiltration Systems Service relative to the water treatment plant filtration equipment maintenance. Item J is consideration of the declaration of surplus items. Item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Larry Tolbert relative to the title opinions and closing services for the Jeanne Lane project. And item L is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Brenda Walsh relative to the acquisition services for the Jeanne Lane project. Counsel, any one of those you'd like to pull off and talk about individually? Seeing none, then do I have a motion for approval for the consent agenda?
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, under old business, tonight, we have five public hearings. Our first public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 54, parcel 51.00, and part of parcel 51.01. It's requested by Sean Collins to go from R-3 to PRD. The property requested contains approximately 15.4 acres and are located on Rocky Fork Ambival Road, and this is a second reading. Chief, can you get us a little air going in here?
Ma'am, they've locked it.
They've locked it?
We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Fine, get in.
[laughing].
Yes, Mayor, counsel, there is, this is a request for rezoning on Rocky Fork Road, Rocky Fork Ambival Road. It is about 600 feet southeast of the current intersection with Morton Lane. This proposed PRD is for development with 20 single-family lots and 32 townhouses. Access would be from Rocky Fork Ambival Road at two different locations. There is an existing house here that will be removed as a part of this development. Minimum square footage of the homes will be 1,600 square feet, and the townhouse portion, which is labeled cottages on the plans, would be age restricted. This would be served by CUD, and fire flow at this time is not adequate, however, there is an upgrade underway that will address that issue, which is slated to be completed next spring. Single-family lots would be served by public street, but the streets within the townhouse area would be private. The planning commission did review this, did have three conditions. One, that the front porch extensions must meet the front building setbacks so the porch is covered. It appears that the public street is proposed to have a landscaped area within the cul-de-sac, and an agreement would be required between the town and the HOA for maintenance of that area. And then the third condition was regarding the Morton Lane lift station. That actually can be taken off now. That's actually not an issue any longer, that's been taken care of. So that part of it can actually, is not really necessary any longer, so. That's all that I've got. Nothing has changed on this since you looked at it on first reading.
Questions for Kevin on this? Had quite a bit of discussion. Thank you, Chief. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item, if you'll come forward at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I'll abstain, ma'am.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Our second public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 35, parcel 94.00, requested by Sean Saunders to go from R-1 to PID. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 3.4 acres and is located at 7085 Florence Road, and this also is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor, counsel, this is a rezoning request, as you said, on Florence Road. It's about midway between Bridgewater Drive and Mesquite Drive. It is across Florence Road from Tangent Industries and an existing self-storage development. The proposed PID is for a self-storage facility, 50,980 square feet total buildings. Will be three conventional self-storage buildings and three buildings that will be covered parking for boats, RVs, that type of thing. Exteriors of the buildings that face Florence Road or the exterior lot lines will be required to be brickstone or cement siding, but the interior elevations could be metal. A type D buffer would be required on the three sides boarding the residentially zoned properties. The planning commission did review this, it'd recommend approval with one condition, that development of this parcel would require dedication of a sufficient roadway to allow for future road widening, as well as the proposed sidewalk extension from Rebel Road to West Fork Park. And that is all that I have.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Kevin, would you just explain type 3 buffering so that everybody's kind of...
Yeah, the type D buffer is the most extensive buffer we require. It is, in addition to being the landscaping, you know, trees and shrubs and the landscaping piece of that, it also is a berm, as well as in addition to the landscaping on top of the berm. So it is the most, most buffer that we require in our ordinance. And it's because it's industrial zoning next to residential zoning.
Kevin, the last time, I think one of us asked about anybody around the area. Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
I have heard from one who I believe is a next door, I don't know south or north, but it is, or maybe to the rear. I don't know exactly where, but they were adjoining neighbor who had concerns about it, primarily from the visibility from into her property from this development, which I don't think will be an issue because it is, all the doors and everything is going to be internal to the site, it's going to be walls, basically, and the buffer as well next to any of the residential property.
Does she feel comfortable with your answer?
She seems, still seems concerned, so she may be here tonight to speak.
Other questions or comments?
You know, I would have concerns about zoning this industrial, which is basically what it would take to put this in there. But since it is in a planned development, for it to be anything besides what is actually been given to us, we would take further action. So, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with this one.
And as you said, that it's going to have walls, and it's going to be entered into from an internal, there's a door to go in? Is that correct?
Yeah, right. So, like, this one kind of has the layout, the buildings and all, but basically it's going to be walls. The exterior of the property will be solid walls, but no doors or anything like that on all three sides.
Other questions or comments for Kevin? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here to speak for or against, if you will come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, Angela Brown, I live next door at 7055 Florence Road. And I just have questions that didn't get answered when I went across the street. And I spoke to two of the four owners of the property, and was told pretty much the opposite of what is up there. She told me there wouldn't be any fencing, there wouldn't be any trees, and I understand now that you're requiring that. One of my questions with the trees is when you start with, are there going to be little trees and I have to wait 20 years for them to grow into something to where I don't see all that? And I do have concerns because I have a pool and a deck, and I have nieces that come over and are swimming. I mean, I have these children in bathing suits, and I don't know who's going to be coming next door looking at me and, you know, my nieces and nephews. It's kind of concerning. And the lighting, is it going to be like bright lights all night long over there, or is it going to be motion light just when something walks in front of it, then the lights go on? Because right now, it's pretty nice over there, it's like a park. It's all trees, no light, it's very secluded. And what I'm scared of is that it's all going to change when he's over there, and it's going to be noisy and more traffic, and, I don't know, I just have questions like that. Lighting, trees. When is the starting date that he plans on doing this? I did ask his mother if he would come over to my house to speak to me about it, and I've never, this is the first time I even, the only reason I know it's him is because his name's on his shirt. Those are just my questions as a neighbor, you know, as a, you know, I didn't buy this house and say, "This is my dream home, I'm going to fix it up," and then now I want this storage facility with God only knows who coming in and out. And as it is right now, we had to plant trees to cover the mess across the street because he does have a storage facility across the street that has a lot of traffic, and it's an eyesore. So, you know, we, of course, planted trees so that we don't have to look at it. Unfortunately, they're not matured yet, but that, I'm trying to think if I have any more questions before I said, because I'm sure he can answer all of these. And that was it, just basically those four questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
And I would love to just get some answers. So I see my side of the road. Can I go up and just ask a question?
Yeah.
About this, and maybe you can answer me? So this is, this is my, well, actually, there's my pool. So what is this right here?
That's a building.
It's going to be a building, and then the tree, the tree line will be behind it?
Right. And that building will be 20 feet off the property.
Oh, so, okay. Oh, great. See, I didn't, and these are just questions.
I didn't know you asked me to come over, I would have come over.
Oh, I did, I asked your mother.
She doesn't know anything what we're doing.
Oh, I know, but she, the stuff that, the questions I had and the answers.
She told me she told you to ask me, and you didn't come over, so I'm like, okay.
Tell you what, I will let you guys maybe chat out in the, in the afterwards, okay? Anybody else to speak for or against this?
Well, I would like to say...
Sure, if you want to come forward.
About the lighting.
Will you, will you, even though we may not, will you state your name and address?
I'm Sean Saunders, and this is my project. And we have other neighbors around the existing storage. And when I heard that one of them didn't like the lighting, I fixed it. I want to be a good neighbor. I put shades on it so it lit up to their backyard, but not their house, if that's what they wanted. If they didn't want their property, I stopped since we didn't want their property. I'm easy to get along with.
Okay.
And you're a customer, or you were a customer.
I asked, twice, I thought it's a customer, twice.
Okay.
So is there anything I can answer for you right now?
Um, I think I just got all my questions answered. And if I have any more questions, at least now I know what you look like, so I can go across the street and I'll come find you.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that's whatever works.
Oh, okay.
Anything else to remember, James?
I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Anybody else to speak for or against?
Just to, I'm sorry, no time for that yet.
Nope. Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Kevin, can you talk a little bit about some of the questions she had in regards to trees and some of those questions?
Certainly, of course, the trees will be between their property line, so it's a 15 or 20, I can't remember exactly, with a buffer that would be there between before any building could start. The lighting, of course, they'll have to meet our requirements on lighting and not allowing light to spill into neighboring properties, so they'll have to meet those requirements. We have those in the ordinance already. I think one of the questions is, when is he going to start? That's up to, he'll have to answer that question. Obviously, if it gets zoned tonight, he can submit site plans as soon as next Monday for the November meeting, so what his timeline is.
Can you talk a little bit about the process if it passes tonight, just so Ms. Brown knows a little bit about what the process is moving forward?
Sure, yeah, it's just a, the process moving forward is there will be a site plan review by the planning commission, which will be along... Yeah, it's just a, the process moving forward is there will be a site plan review by the planning commission, which will be a lot more detailed drawings on what he has submitted to this point. There will have to be the buffering, the stormwater utilities, all those kind of things will have to be included on those plans. And that, once that site plan will go to the planning commission, it won't come back to this body, it's just the planning commission. And then, once the planning commission has reviewed it and approves it, it has to be consistent with the approved Bud. And then, at that point, he can then submit for grading permits and building permits. So we're just administrated through codes and stormwater offices, but, so that's kind of the process. His timeline, again, is, it's up to him when he submits those plans to us, but.
And then what are the requirements, how big will the, I mean, like, is it going to be small trees that is, that are going to take ten to twenty years to grow or do you require the buffing be set?
There's certain, and I can't, I don't have the ordinance with me tonight, so I can't give you the exact specific requirements. There are minimum requirements we'll have to meet though. They won't be full-grown trees, certainly, they will have, they'll be, but there are some minimum height and size requirements that they will have to meet to begin to start the growth process. And we try to encourage, you know, faster-growing species, certainly with evergreens, that will grow faster than, so that's certainly something we would want to encourage them to do.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Kevin? Okay, we have had our public hearing, do I have a motion?
Just real quick.
Sure.
Ms. Brown, just so you know, if he submits to planning commission this next month, that'll be Thursday, November the fifth. So if you'd like to get a look at it and come in to that meeting, we'll begin at five. Tim and I actually serve on that body, so if you have further questions, maybe you can address them at that point.
Okay, and when is it, November fifth?
If he submits next month.
If he submits on Monday, they meet the first Thursday of every month. And our agenda is we put those on the website, so, or feel free to give us a call if you.
I'll let you know. Okay. Okay, so, do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion, do we have a second? Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map thirty-four G, group A, parcel twenty-seven point zero zero requested by Michael Lee to go from C two to R two. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately thirty-six one hundredths of an acre and is located at two oh three Stewart Drive and this is a second reading. Kevin?
This is mayor and council, this is a, one parcel of a larger, part of a larger overall development that's been there for many years. It's all zoned, for the most part, has been zoned C two for approaching twenty-five or thirty years now. This would be the third time we've had a request within that subdivision to rezone it back from the C two zoning back to residential zoning. This is a vacant lot and they are requesting to rezone it back to R two, which would allow for a house to be built on the property. This, like I said, this is the third one we've had. Planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Comments or questions for Kevin on this? We've talked quite a bit about this. Seeing none, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move to approve.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map thirty-four parcels twenty-four point zero three requested by Mike Breece to go from I three to I one. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately ninety-eight one hundredths of an acre and is located at five fifty-five Wade Harrod Road and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, mayor and council, this is again, kind of a, this is probably the third request we've had on Wade Harrod Road to rezone some property there. Currently zoned all, most of it zoned I three and this would be an I one rezoning request. The proposed use is allowed in both districts, but the I three front setback of a hundred feet makes any development of the parcel difficult as it ranges basically from one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and ninety-five feet deep. There is not adequate fire flow in this area to support industrial development, but that is an issue regardless of the zoning of the property. Again, this proposed use is for a parking area for towed vehicles and so as a part of the fencing requirements, the fences are required to meet the front setback and so, again, with a hundred-foot front setback, it makes it very difficult. So, we did discuss certainly about the screening of this from Lowry Street and I think that's still something that we would review when the site plan comes in. Again, as we related to you at the workshop, the person making this request had a concern about trees next to fencing and people jumping into, over the fence into his lot. I think we can, again, as I said the other night, we can address that by putting in screening that's not easily climbed up in Arboretis or something like that, so. And it would still be, you know, an evergreen type of screening that would be there year-round, so, I mean, we would look at that at site plan.
Kevin, I've had a request that you put the microphone closer to you, I think, as quiet as you talk, they're having trouble hearing you on social media and they all want to hear what you have to say.
I guess, okay, I'll do my, try to do better.
Okay. No, it was actually, it was my mother from here, it was Kathy Farrell, so yes, my mother from here at the town. I just do what I'm told, that's all. So, questions for Kevin on this? Tim or Mark, anything you want to add? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance to amend Article Four, Section four point zero three zero temporary use regulations and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, mayor and council, as we've talked about this several times, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance with regard to mobile food service vehicles. These amendments would change the provisions of the zoning ordinance for this type of temporary use. Instead of requiring a BGA review of each location, this will allow them by right in residential neighborhoods and in C two and C three districts subject to several requirements. They will also be required to obtain an annual permit to operate within the town at a fee of two hundred dollars and that fee would be doubled if they are found to be operating without a permit. And then if they choose to do a food truck rally, which is more than two trucks at a location, there would be a separate permit at a three hundred dollar fee for that. These will be administrative upon review by the town planner. And all the text amendments are included in your packet there and they have all been reviewed and recommended by the planning commission for approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? We've talked about this quite a bit, I think it really got brought back to our attention when, with COVID and being put in residential areas, we had kind of not thought about that before because we've never really had people asking for that before. So, there are no questions for Kevin, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion. Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our law, our last item under old.
I'm sorry, yes, there was a couple places in there where the text still needs to be cleaned up a little bit, BGA was referenced in a couple places, can you just clean that up?
I'll figure that.
Yeah, I figured it's real down, it's small down the bottom, I figured you didn't see it, so, thanks.
Well, Kevin had put it up, but I'll, we'll make sure it's covered.
What he's saying is he's throwing Kevin under the bus.
I was telling you I didn't do it. Kevin's already in trouble tonight, so I figured I'd.
Thought he missed when I was speaking up.
Okay, so our last item is under old business, but not a public hearing because it's coming back to us for first reading. This is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation in C two and PRD zoning for properties located on tax map fifty parcels one point zero zero, two point zero zero and four point zero zero containing approximately two hundred and fifty-two point six acres. It's requested by Brett Smith on behalf of Encompass Land Group. The recommendation also includes the annexation of approximately thirty-four hundred linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Rocky Fork Road. The properties are located along Rocky Fork Road southwest of I twenty-four and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, mayor and council, as you're all aware, we've talked about this one quite a bit several times. It has changed certainly since you looked at it on first reading and deferred it. The acreage is not changing, it's still two hundred and fifty-two point six, but the overall development within it has changed quite a bit and then changed again and changed again. So, there's been a lot of discussion on this one. It's now, as it's requested before you tonight, it's about sixty-one acres of the property is requested to be zoned C two upon annexation. And the remaining hundred ninety-one point six acres would be the PRD. The total units is reduced now, it's down to twelve hundred and four. There are four hundred and ten single-family lots, two hundred and eighty-four townhouses and five hundred and ten condos, that's now proposed. Density is now about six point two eight units per acre, it was about six point four. Access would be from Rocky Fork Road, there would be connections to Woodpoint, the Andrews Development, as well as Olive Branch Road on the east side of Rocky Fork. We did receive revised drawings too, that you all were sent on Friday. And so, we have those in PowerPoint tonight if we need to look at that. But essentially, that is what the request is for in front of you tonight. I know there's been a lot of discussion about Rocky Fork Road and interchange and this development certainly accommodates what we would need for the interchange right-of-way as well as Rocky Fork Road. If it needs to be relocated to the west, that's one of the commercial properties is there. Partially, I, when this first came in, I asked for them, they had some townhomes closer to the road and I asked them to move it back so we would be able to have room there for that Rocky Fork Road right-of-way if we needed it to be there, so. And we've got drawings that show all that as well, if we need to look at that tonight. Of course, we also talked a lot the other night about the extension to McEwen. Certainly, that's, can still be discussed, this, whatever route we end up taking with that. I know there's been some discussion about Lee Road, Rocky Fork Road, different routes, that's all got to be discussed with, certainly our neighbors through the west and we got to work out what's best for everyone with regards to that. Whatever route that ends up being can be accommodated through this project as it's been requested to you, so.
And they're agreeable to that?
They are, they're certainly, yes, they're aware of it. Again, it's something, one of the first discussions I had with them, we talked about that, so.
Okay. Council, we have discussed this in multiple meetings. We had a special called meeting specifically for this and for our road to McEwen. I know Brian has had some more discussion about the road to McEwen and kind of plans with that. But what questions do you have about this project specifically, things for Kevin? Or do you have questions for the developer?
Kevin, on the maps there, in some of the commercial area, it listed on the map as C two zoning. How does that interact with a planned development?
Well, I mean, it's essentially what it is, is it doesn't tie a certain, there's not a layout, there's not a building, there's not a specific list of uses like you would see in a Bud.
Whatever's built in there will meet C two standards?
Will, we have to meet the C two standards, certainly have to meet our, the sign of view, our overlay requirements because as a part of this recommendation, the overlay, Eden Springs overlay is getting extended into that area. So we have to meet those requirements from architecture, landscaping, screening, all those kind of things. The uses are restricted to what's allowed in C two setbacks, height limitations, all those things are set by the zoning ordinance requirements of C two.
So how far back does the overlay go as it relates to where, to their development?
Yeah, all of the C two area as well as the multifamily condo area and the townhomes, there were some, well, some of the issues in the, in the overlay with regards to the townhomes, not about materials or setbacks or parking or anything like that, just there's a few. Some of the minor details in the overlay didn't really fit with the townhome development like it does with an apartment or a condo type development. And so, but it's like, again, as far as materials and landscaping requirements and all that, it would be, include all the multifamily commercial and, well, multifamily and commercial areas, not the single-family part of this. The single-family piece would meet the requirements we talked about with regards to the setbacks, the HVAC units in the rear and the material requirements and all that. As we've looked on all PRDs recently.
So the overlay goes back all the way to where the single-family developments or single-family homes start, is, that's what I'm asking?
All the townhome piece of it, yes, yeah.
I think, Kevin, early on, we had a map that had their phase plan. I don't necessarily need to see that, but do you know timelines or can they speak about timelines? I've had a couple of comments and folks reach out regarding their concerns about traffic on the road and, you know, how fast we would be able to keep up, that kind of thing.
I mean, they have stated and I could, they can certainly here can speak to that, in the past meetings they've talked about it, it's, they're looking at a minimum, probably a ten-year build-out on this and so.
If I remember right, phase, phase one and two pretty much had a little bit on both sides, it kind of stretched out.
Yeah.
Got a little bit of the residential and the commercial, but not all one or the other. And I think that was the concern that I was asked was, if they build all the residential first, they build all the condos, townhomes first, then that's a tremendous amount of traffic, you know, that kind of thing. So, my understanding is that's not the plan, that their plan is that it would be spread out across there.
Yeah, I think there's, they're looking at different, they're wanting to hit different markets and so they're building different products to hit different markets. Certainly a condo buyer is different from a single-family buyer and that sort of thing. I know they're, from a utility standpoint, it's kind of coming from the east side partially and then, but then really from a, they're going to start kind of from the west as well, really primarily from the building, kind of build eastward as far as the actual construction of residences. Other than, you know, the condo buildings on the east side of Rocky Fork.
They'll also have to submit a traffic study.
Right.
Plans and they are very aware that any upgrades to Rocky Fork Road that are subjected to that, that traffic study would have to be taken care of on a timely basis.
Will that traffic study go all the way to Lee Road or no?
It's going, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to sit down and scope that out, but I absolutely anticipate Lee Road, that curve where Lee and Rocky Fork come together will certainly have to be a part of that. How it affects, you know, potentially the interchange or the intersection of Eden Springs and Old Nashville Highway potentially even with this amount of traffic. I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to scope that out with them. But that'll have to be, it may be that there's phase improvements, that the first, before the second or the hundredth house or whatever, you got to have this done and before the five hundredth house it's this much because it's, obviously it's going to take some time to build up. But we'll have to scope all that out with them.
Kevin, the other outlets, that one that goes into Woodpoint and then one that goes north into the Andrews property, there's another one back in the back, I guess, north of Woodmont there. And then also the one over at Olive Branch Road, how many of these roads are existing and?
Well, Olive Branch Road is an existing county road. Green Tree Drive would be one of the connections into Andrews and then one, and so that will be built as a part of the Andrews construction of that development.
So we don't know when that one will appear then, right?
They've got their first phase, has been approved by the planning commission, so I don't know exactly, I don't think they've started construction yet, but I know that the preliminary plat for phase one has come in. Woodpoint is under construction, I believe they've got the boundary down on that piece of it. Of course, then there's, they've got a couple or multiple stubs that would be into vacant undeveloped property certainly, right now at least.
The outlet north of that is, we don't have anything there yet, do we?
No. No. The only thing on the north side is the Andrews development. Now, some of that, I don't think Woodmont comes into that. There's some, there's some other vacant property there that's certainly there, will be developed at some point, I'm sure, but.
But there's not an outlet into Woodmont, is there?
There's not, no. There is no, there was no, the connection that came, this actually only borders Woodmont on that small piece there where they're, actually where the townhomes piece of Woodmont is. Woodpoint was between this property and, of course, that connection is there.
You may have already answered. The road that's on the southwest side, that one will be a dead end as well, right?
Okay. The one that stubs in, the one that stubs into the west, to me?
Yes, uh-huh.
It will be a dead end. I think that actually would eventually connect over to Woodpoint as well, there's about three or four tracts in between there that would have to develop, but there's a, that would eventually connect back to Woodpoint and Woodmont as well.
Okay, 'cause everything else there is pretty much stubbed out, so we'd have to go into some other place.
Where does Olive Branch end?
Olive Branch currently ends, there's some vacant property that it deadends into eventually. I'm trying to remember exactly where, how it ties into, it ties back to Seminary, I can't recall exactly where it ties in.
But, but on the, on the western side, or the northern side, whatever, the northwest side?
I mean, where it's going to be connected, it currently ends basically at their property line, is where it currently ends, and it would be extended through the condo piece of their property and to Rocky Fork Road, and then go directly across and come into their, to the roundabout there, the first roundabout in their development.
Brian, do you have a feel for Rocky Fork going west?
We've got a couple of things to look at there, and one of the first things we wanted to do is, last Wednesday, we got reports from the MPO that finally, this, this project is on the MPO list that will go forward to be voted on. So, our next move on this would be to bring the six entities together, because one of the things that we've looked at, you know, the Lee Road aspect of this came up this week, and we've looked at that, and we've also looked at Rocky Fork. It's gonna make a difference really for us where the other jurisdictions bring the road to. One of the things we've been dealing with is, you know, dealing with the folks in Nolansville, one of the things we anticipated was it would come closer to the inside interior part of Nolansville. They're saying they want to go south about a mile and a half. Well, it makes no sense for us to build a road someplace that we don't have an adjoining road to connect to. So, I think our next move right now is, this project will not affect whether or not we go Lee Road and/or Rocky Fork Road, we'll have the option to do either, but I think we need to do a corridor study with our other partners that gives us a full layout, and then we could submit that back to the MPO as a actual, everybody's got their idea of where they want the road, we haven't put it down to the exact geographic spot. But there's nothing about this, I've checked with a third party that I reached out to and did some engineering look at, and there's nothing about this project that will preclude us from using Lee Road and/or Rocky Fork. We just gotta decide which way is the best way for us to tackle that.
And the bridge approaches, the interchange?
As the bridge approaches interchange, we've talked to TDOT, we've also, again, we've had two engineering entities that have interest in this property share with us their insights, and then I've also had a third party give me insights. This, this project would not preclude us from being able to get the interchange where we need it, and it would not stop the road from being built the way it needs to to give us a 45 mile an hour road bearing. There's a couple of different options, you know, we're working a lot with the unknown. We don't know what 15 years down the road, 10 years down the road would look like, but everybody we've talked to has said that there is a way to make this work, and make it work in a rational way.
So, is it, when you're saying that, is it a way to make just this particular project work with the road, or what if, once, say this gets approved, it starts, and we have multiple people coming in and want to develop in this area? Would it affect that portion of it?
What we'll have to do is, after this project, looking at whether or not we go to Lee Road, or if we continue with Rocky Fork Road, the next segment past this, will have some influence on what we want to do. So, that's the work we've got to do after this is done.
And that's a priority?
And we're working on that now, and that's a priority for us. We're already reaching out.
And it's not something we should do before we move forward with this?
There's nothing about this project right now that would keep us from achieving the McEwen connector and/or the interstate exchange.
Okay. And I asked the same question. That was my concern too.
That's verified, again, by TDOT and a third-party engineering firm that I've worked with.
Okay. Now, did TDOT, and sorry for just blurting out, did they give us something in writing that said that that would work either way?
TDOT, TDOT has not done an engineering study, they're just saying, based on what EPS lands presented to them, they can make it work within the confines of that triangle that, that's what they told them to go back, same thing they told us. In my conversations with them, I said, "I need to know what you're looking for," and those kind of things, and the curvatures and those kind of things, because some of that has been brought to our attention. There's a sinkhole that, that everybody's looking at, there's nothing, what TDOT is telling me, they're not putting anything in writing, because they're not guaranteeing anything.
Okay.
They're just saying there's nothing that they see right now that would keep us from achieving the interchange. The third-party engineering company actually did a drawing for me that shows that we can achieve a 45 mile an hour curve and curvature, that they've worked on other interchanges, and it is doable. Now, currently, the way it's set up, it's not optimum, but can be achieved, but one of the things that we've talked about with this group and Reagan Smith, is they're giving us the ability to move that road to the west, which then does provide the optimum curvature for the road.
Okay. So, if they move the road, though, that cuts into the commercial, correct?
It does cut into the commercial. It would move the commercial, what we'd do is basically move the road within that development, so it would move the commercial a little bit. So, what we may, at the end of the day, when, when we get to that point and we've got to make the road decisions, what it would do is maybe cut into the, to the commercial on that left side of that drawing, but it would add back to the right. We wouldn't lose.
Okay, that was my next question.
Yeah, we wouldn't lose acreage, it's just moving it from one site to the other.
Okay. Okay.
Wouldn't they move the bridge further east rather than west?
They, right now, they're, they say, TDOT says, they're gonna do everything they can to build the bridge right next to the existing bridge. They don't want to move it as far as a span of length away from that existing bridge. Now, it could be built on the left side or the right side, and if it's built on the left side, we still have a program that'll work, and then we can build it on the right side, and it helps.
Total number of units, Kevin?
It was 1,204. It was, I think the original request, it had 1,262.
I'm sorry?
It had 1,262 in the original request, so they expanded, they've expanded the commercial area beyond what was originally looked at, and so, by lowering the presidential area, it does lower the number of units.
It's just in that bottom-left corner.
Got it.
So, I have another question, but it's not related to that portion.
Sure, absolutely.
With regards to the commercial, I understand that the developer is only developing the residential. Is the commercial just going to sit there, or is there gonna be like a timeline on, we need to be developing, or they need to be selling to someone to develop the commercial while the residential is being built? Or is it just, is the plan just for it to sit there?
Well, certainly, I think that's, there's a couple of things, probably from a market standpoint, till the interchange is there, may not really be a market for the commercial. I think another factor is, there's a fairly large investment in a waterline upgrade that's gonna have to happen for fire flow protection for the commercial development to happen, so I think those will certainly factor in. I believe, my understanding is this developer would be holding the property until at some point, if the interchange is there. Now, obviously, it's gonna be property that, property is bought and sold every day, so that could certainly change, but that's my understanding is their intent and their plan.
So, the upgrade on the waterline, that will be the responsibility of whoever the owner of the commercial part is?
It's, yes, or they may even be required for the condos, I'm not 100% sure on that piece of it, but yes, it'll be their, it'll be their responsibility, yes, it won't be something the town undertakes, no.
Steve, you had questions about timeline, do you want to hear from the developer on that?
Yeah, good. I think they would know.
If you will state name and company you're with, just for the record, please.
Sure, Rob Pease, I'm with CPS Land, and we're partnering with Encompass Land Group on this. And timeframe is, as somebody mentioned, it's at least a 10-year project, a lot of it's just market-driven, obviously. As far as sequence, the first phase, it will be on the west side of Rocky Fork, and that'll be the townhomes and the single-family product, and it'll be a mix of both of those developing. The condos on the east side will, that's market-driven, that'll probably be, more than likely be a later phase, so, you know, whether it's the second or third phase or later, it's really gonna depend upon market, and some momentum too, so we want to get going with the townhomes and the single-family first.
In our packet, there's a phase, did you see it?
No.
It's in the, it's the very last page in our packet. You see it?
It's a little different, it's the layout, but yeah, it's similar.
Mayor, I think we've covered everything, unless you all have other questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I like this, the phase map, one day, Raquel, to your point, even on their phase map, the commercial is all Phase 4, which is last step. Which kind of gives me a little bit more comfort, because if something changes by the time they get to that point, we've still got open land to make some adjustments if we have to.
It's probably gonna take Phase 1, 2 to even get any commercial interest going over there. You know, demographics and rooftops matter to commercial people, so the residential side will probably come first, and that's what it looks like they're planning here.
One of the things that Brian and I have talked about is us all getting back together about McEwen and what we're looking at going on out, and what the plan is moving forward. We know the importance of the development out in this area and making sure that we get it right, so.
I think that would be a good idea. I really think, personally, I think we need to have a very robust plan, as this land, not just this land, but the land between here and where we're wanting to go, starts coming up for sale and developing, I think it would be wise for the town to look at purchasing right away as it comes available at a lower rate now than what it may be worth 10 years from now, or eight years from now. In some cases, if it's coming up for sale already, the land's already getting split, let us go ahead and get the part we need in that, in that one piece of property, rather than wait and then try to have to do, you know, a year-long project to get right away later.
We understand that, and like I said, you know, really, the piece we've been waiting on is to make sure the MPO was gonna buy into the validity of this, this total project, and it is on the list to be voted on, so that makes us feel better. I think the next move is, we gotta make sure, it, it does matter where we put our road, but we gotta make sure we're putting a road that's gonna match up to the other jurisdictions.
Whether or not it matches up to Williamsburg.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about Clovercroft now, you've got that dog leg in Clovercroft, which is just, it's somewhat of a pain, so we gotta make sure that everybody's buying stock into this thing, and I think, you know, one of the things we want to look at is doing that overall corridor study, and I think that's gonna be a very important part of that, and that includes Brentwood, Franklin, Williamson County, Nolansville, Rutherford County, and us participating. So, that, that's our next move, so.
I have a little bit of selfish reasons, but, you know, I'm not sure.
You'd be retired by then, Steve.
I hope so. I don't know if that's true. I, I'm not sure, I mean, obviously, the interchange is critical and important, but this road provides a lot of value, whether the interchange ever gets built or not. And honestly, there's an opportunity to build a thoroughfare that, if nothing else, helps Rutherford County get to Williamson County, you know, even if we don't go all the way to McEwen because other people don't buy in or whatever. And that's my only thought, is there's, there's benefit to building this road even today. And, you know, what I don't want to get into is, we get into a situation where TDOT's ready to go, and now we're looking at a $60 million project, and we've been off a little more than we can chew. That's gonna be a lot easier to do that over a 10-year period with funds, you know, gradually building up so that we already have some things already in place, and, you know, land usually costs less today than it does tomorrow. Construction costs less today than it will tomorrow, you know, so, that's all I'm saying, is it's more wise to.
Point very well taken, and we, trust me, this is a priority for us.
Brian, does it get, does it get to some point where we have to put money up to get it moving?
I think we're probably getting very close to a step where we will have some financial skin in this game. Yes.
Perfect, thanks.
And I think that's what we've been doing, but I also think, from a financial standpoint, I think that's what we've been doing, is making sure that we've put ourselves in a financial position so that we're able to do that, so that we're able to put money up.
That's why we're, we're able right now to do, you know, three or four rather large road projects that we have going on, and still keep tax rates the same and not have to raise, and that's what I want to continue, right?
Yeah, and.
I want to make sure that the council that comes after us, you know, eight or, four or eight or 12 years from now, however long that is, that we've laid a good foundation, and that we're not, they're not playing catch-up to us not planning.
Correct. And I just want to say, and I know your eagerness to see this and to get involved in it, but I think before we meet with the council, I think we've got to do some work with the other entities to kind of understand where we're at. There's, and I'll be happy to talk individually with you about that, but there's, there's other pieces of this puzzle that have to come together, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Interesting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we have heard about this project, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? I know we've talked about it for quite a while, I just, what you said about needing to come back together, and Steve, what you said about being, having a comprehensive plan to look at all of this land on this side, I think that that will be the wisest thing we could do. And so, I understand that we've taken the time to make sure this plan or this development does not prohibit us from being able to move forward with Rocky Fork. I just am very concerned that, I don't want to rush through, and like you say and have said, we only get one chance to get this right. And so, I just think it's very, would be very prudent of us to look at an overall plan for how this whole section is gonna develop. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
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 Okay, we will move on to new business. Kevin, we have one item under the Planning Commission report, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, parcel 39.00, requested by Alcorn Properties LLC to go from R3 to PRD. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 2.82 acres and is located at 11819 Old Nashville Highway, and this is a first reading.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request, 11819 Old Nashville Highway. It's about 900 feet northwest to the intersection with Hazelwood Drive. Land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3, R6, and PRD, which is the villages of Hazelwood, PRD. This proposed PRD is for development with 24 townhouses. Access will be from Old Nashville Highway. There is an existing house and detached garage on the property that would be removed as a part of the development. Townhouses would range from 1,464 to 1,815 square feet in size with one-car garages. A type C buffer would be required on all property lines bordering R3 zoning, which is on one side and the rear. Did include the pattern book with this as well. The Planning Commission did review this, should recommend approval with three conditions. One, fiber, cement, slash brick, slash stone materials are required to be utilized on all four elevations instead of the vinyl siding. The requested pattern book did have vinyl siding on the side and rear. Talked with the developer, and they are agreeable to that. Of course, it was recommended as a condition by the Planning Commission as well. Two, water line upgrades in fire hydrant locations are to be reviewed in detail, a site plan review, there will have to be some upgrades here. They do show some fire hydrants, but they may have to be moved a little bit, but they are being shown. And then, they did submit a revised auto turn, the original auto turn with the emergency vehicle, response vehicles. They used the wrong truck, and so they did submit their revised. When I did send that, I didn't get it to the fire department directly till today, so they may not have had a chance to review that yet, but that is something they'll have to look at and to be able to do that by second reading. I think with the revisions, it's okay, but I do want them to take a look at it. And that's all that I have.
Questions for Kevin or Tim or Mark? Anything you want to add?
You guys might remember this site, and.
I was going to say, wasn't this a Dollar General?
It was proposed to be a Dollar General.
For C2 zoning, yes.
If that didn't, that didn't happen, it was a commercial site, and there, you know, this sits on a five lane. What we looked at is all the properties around it and surrounding it across the street. There's a mobile home park, there's an apartment complex next door, and then across the street there are more townhomes. So, I think from a planning perspective, we saw this kind of as a fit for where it is, especially being located on the Old Nashville Highway.
Other comments or questions?
What's the ramifications of it not meeting the auto turn plan?
Well, they'll have to meet it. I mean, they won't be, they'll have to amend their plans to reflect it. I think what they got.
Would they just have to widen?
They might have to widen something, change an angle on a turn or something like
But we would know by second reading that everything is good.
Yes, yeah.
Are there any requirements for ingress and egress, since Old Nashville Highway is pretty fast-moving road usually? Is there, is there like little turnoff lanes or something there?
Something this small wouldn't, I mean, we could ask them to look at it. This is not enough traffic generation that would meet our requirements for a traffic study?
No, no, no. Okay, I got you. I was just trying to tell from the drawing, it looked like there was kind of a wide opening there, and I was trying to figure out if it was included or what was going on.
I think their proposed road is in pretty much the same location as the existing driveway that goes to the house. It's already there as far as location, so it wouldn't be a new thing. Certainly, we'll have to look at that. I mean, we'll, I think the side distance will be okay, we'll sort of look at all that, you know, if it's approved when the site plan comes in.
Is this pretty much the same type of development as Denny Brook, or is this different?
It's very, it's similar. I think it's a, it's a little bit different product as far as the size of the units. It's very similar to the Cantor Farms development, which is near Chicken Pike. Other than these will have the hardy siding and not the vinyl siding, but it's a very similar type product, just what's down there, so same builder.
Kevin, that's a good question, too. From a density standpoint, the villages of Hazelwood were pretty snug. They were really tight.
They were.
I don't think this is quite that dense, is it?
This is, this is about eight, a little over eight per acre, I think.
Yeah.
That was a higher density on that side.
Yeah, just, I think that's why Jerry probably wanted to ask the questions.
Yeah.
And you may have answered it, are these for rent or for sale?
They'll be for sale.
Uh, Denny Brook, is it for rent or for sale?
It was built for sale, certainly. I mean, once it's built, I mean, it was built as a condo or townhome that's built for sale, so.
They sold them all originally, Jerry?
Yeah.
There may be real use in there now, but they're owned by individuals.
Right. It's not a complex where one person owns them all and rents them out or anything like that.
Yeah, my biggest thing, thought process for this is when Dollar General came forward, we heard from several neighbors, they didn't want commercial building, you know, buddying up to their property. You know, this is, I think, the next best solution, right? They didn't want that, well, then this is, this is the alternative.
Yeah, it's probably not a single-family development parcel.
Not on a five-lane road like that, it's not going to be.
On Old Nashville Highway, it was still two-lane, the house made sense, probably, but.
Have you heard from anyone about this one yet?
I've heard from, I think there was one neighbor that called me and asked, you saw the sign, asked about what was going on, but we had not heard from most, very many. Last time, I didn't hear from people till it was time for the public hearing either, so it may happen by next month, but at this time, I really only heard from one person.
And they were just inquiring, or did they have comments?
Primarily, they were just, yeah, just wondering what was proposed, and I kind of explained it to them. They really didn't express an opinion one way or the other.
Okay.
Single car garage, is correct?
Yes, but the double-width parking.
Double-width parking, right.
On the, on the driveway.
What's the depth of the parking? Is it?
20 feet minimum.
If this were normal zoning, what would it fall under?
It would be under R6.
Yeah, what I was noticing is the five pieces of property that are behind this piece of property, they would back up to eight units. So, it's five, five single-family to eight units. That's really not, you know, I don't think you're going to get any better. They could have rearranged this and put probably 11 or 12 along that back piece of property. So, there is still some open space and some green space that will butt up to these neighbors.
And there's, there's quite a few existing trees on this property that I'm sure they'll try to keep some of the existing trees and supplement where they need to for the buffering. That's, and that, that works well because you're not trying to get something to grow, something that's already there in the living and has been, so.
They're already bigger.
It's already there, so.
Another piece is a sitting area, a grilling area, you had a pavilion.
Yes.
As I recall from the last conversation when it was Dollar General, the biggest concern with the neighbors was the more of the transient-type traffic and not only vehicular but pedestrian that a commercial business would draw. And being that, I know one of the first questions I asked you with this development was, does Old Nashville Highway candidate support it? And the answer was yes. And then the second thing was, looking at what we saw prior to this, realizing that we're on a, you know, commercial highway for all practical purposes, and knowing that this complex fits that definition, it's similar to what we saw on the other side of Old Nashville Highway by the church, that we went back and looked at a couple of different drawings and concepts and whatnot that eventually, that at one point involved commercial, and then the commercial went away and we went strictly with a residential. And we, and again, it's, this is a type of project that is supported by the road, and if you look at the zoning that's surrounding it, it's very, very similar.
Other questions or comments?
But Kevin, you said that it's contingent on meeting the requirement for the fire department, correct?
Yes, they're, they'll have to meet that, yes.
Condition.
As well as the other two items.
Okay. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. No package liquor board reports tonight. Item C is consideration of a resolution to reimburse expenses for a future debt issue. Rex, you were hiding back there in the corner, we didn't see you tonight.
That's a good place to be. The Olive Branch Sewer Line Capital Project was budgeted to be financed with state revolving fund loans. Since the budget was adopted, we've received notice from the state that these funds will not be available for us on this project. Since the workshop bids were taken, we got a good bid, so we anticipate on paying for this project from our savings. But it would be nice to have this resolution in our back pocket if economic conditions changed.
Questions for Rex on this? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Norris Brothers relative to the construction of the Olive Branch Sewer Main Extension and Proposal with Dempsey, Dillon &amp; Associates for the CEI Services.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Covering down for Mike, he's still kind of under the weather from an illness. This contract is to approve, allow you to execute the contract for Norris Brothers to build the Olive Branch trunk sewer. We bid on the 29th. And then also, the CEI Services for Dempsey Dillon to provide a full-time onsite inspection and additional survey work as needed for the project.
Jeff, is it going to be Dempsey Dillon, or is it going to be Thomas Hutton? Thomas Hutton rather than Dempsey Dillon?
Also, to have your attention, because Mike's been out, this, one provision on here that I was not able to address before I went to Ms. Diane, on your approval, just know that the indemnification section, I'll probably be stripping most of that away. We don't pay attorney's fees and all of that, so we won't be adding, but I will be removing some sections there of the indemnification section.
Is this a new or different one because of?
Well, what happened was, last time, they just had a space holder at the workshop, so then, of course, Mike went out, and I guess he submitted it, so it went straight through on the agenda quick, so I didn't get to see this.
Gotcha.
Are you comfortable with this?
I'm comfortable with, just the indemnification, I just want to change before you attach your signature to it tonight.
Okay. Council, questions on this? Is there a specific way you want a motion to be made?
No, I think we have it on the minutes here.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything under other tonight?
Right.
Okay. Status reports. Ms. Diane, anything? Brian?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of things. I'll try to get through these quickly, but first and foremost, I wanted to acknowledge that we received a very nice note from the family of Ray Jones Jr. thanking us for our kindness during the passing of Officer Ray Jones from our department. Secondly, and a couple of things here, just very quickly, it's always a pleasure as town manager to receive some emails that say some positive things, and we did receive several emails. One was from one of our customers, wanted to reach out and thank us for the work that Mr., she said, Mr. Derek did, who's one of our gas department employees, and some work that he did at our house around our gas service, and just wanted to show some appreciation. Also, we received a really nice note from a Terry Eastlaman, and said that our town crews were working around Seven Oaks with some heavy equipment. Her grandson was enthralled with the heavy equipment. Our foreman on the job, she did not have a name, but said the foreman on the job noticed the young man watching and went over and got him, brought him to a safe distance, and explained to him what was going on, and just kind of made the young man's day. So, kudos to our crews for that kind of work. Also, we received a really nice expression of appreciation to our police department for showing respect during the funeral for Mr. Bill Estes. I wanted to make us aware of that again. Chief, you guys do a great job of always being out there and providing the escorts and stopping traffic in that fashion, and it is great respect for those that have passed on. Some exciting news, most of you have heard this by now, but I wanted to make this announcement again, but ViJohn, who is one of our businesses that have been here for many, many years working with us, and they have planned an expansion of 200 jobs and a $35 million investment in their plant and some other facilities here in Smyrna as part of their continued growth. As you might imagine, their Germex brand is doing very well during the time of COVID as hand sanitizer, so we appreciate the partnership with ViJohn and the work that we do with them. The last thing I have is I want to remind everybody that in the morning at 7:00 a.m., CSX will be closing the McNichol Drive crossover, and it'll be closed until October the 17th. That intersection will be closed down, so you'll need to find an alternate route in and out if you live in that area. Just be patient. The railroad has been working on the tracks. Steve called me the other morning, we had a little bit of a mix-up. And what we did find out, Steve saw them working down the way, and we had two of our intersections blocked. There was another crew that was working behind the Chinese restaurant that had tripped the signals and closed the gates, so we were able to get ahold of CSX. And Steve, thank you for pointing that out the other morning. CSX got out there and got that resolved for us. But they are working on the railroad tracks across the town of Smyrna, so just be patient. But McNichol Drive will be closing at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. That's the 14th, and will be closed through the 17th, so please make appropriate accommodations.
Will it be closing in the Springs and Washington also?
No, right now, it's just McNichol. I mean, we have not, I've not been told.
They will move down to Washington after they reopen McNichol, but they will not, as right now, they didn't say anything about Eames Springs anymore.
Anything else, Brian?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Jeff?
You'll probably be addressing it, but just a reminder that early voting begins tomorrow, the 14th through the 29th. Obviously, there's numerous locations, but here at Town Hall, also a spot for early voting.
Great. Raquel?
I'll piggyback off of that. I was going to say that the hours are 9:00 to 6:00 Monday through Friday and 8:00 to 2:00 on Saturday for early voting. I do have an announcement for the Senior Activity Center. Ms. Friend, the executive director, sent me an email to let everyone know that they are getting ready to open back up, so I want to read what she sent, and it says, "The Senior Activity Center of Smyrna will reopen on October the 21st from 9:00 to 2:00 Monday through Thursday with limited activities and programs. The center has worked hard to develop all the necessary guidelines to keep all who come healthy and safe." They will hold their, the Senior Activity Center will also hold its annual spaghetti dinner as a drive-through event from 11:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, November the 14th. Tickets are available at the center located at 100 Rake Street, just behind the Smyrna Library. For more information, you can contact the Smyrna, excuse me, the website, smyrnaseniorcenter.org, or call the Activity Center, 615-459-4939. And I'm very excited that they're getting ready to do that. I'm sure there are a lot of people that are excited about being able to gather and visit safely, so those are the only announcements I have tonight.
Great, thanks. H.C.?
Um, you know, there's been a lot of buzz on the internet and such as that about the shop Amazon days, which are big right now. I just want to counter that by saying shop local. And be kind, Mary Esther.
I've been kind all night.
Okay.
Um, Tim?
Nothing.
Jerry? Jerry, you've got new glasses.
You're the first one that's noticed, thank you.
Really?
Yeah, thank you.
You are more than welcome. I noticed you since I came in. See?
I have two things. I've received a letter, I'm actually holding it, from a lady by the name of Patty Taylor and Jay Rodney Taylor. They are a couple that lived in Pensacola for 36 years and recently moved to Middle Tennessee. They came out and visited our Jeff Coos Memorial and then brought a friend of theirs, Mike Scott. Mike Scott was a personal friend of Captain Jeff Coos and flew many missions with him. They came to town and got to see the memorial for the first time. They expressed how beautifully done it was and that they really love it. Unfortunately, while they were there, there was a few little items that had gotten missed by crews or whatever, so the letter is, is telling us how well of a job it is and asking us to convey our citizens and the people that visit it to help continue to make it a pristine setting that it is, and that it's a beautifully well-done memorial, but we, we need to be very diligent about maintaining. And so, I would ask the citizens, if you're out there and you see a piece of trash that's been left, or you see anything, either let us know or take care of it yourself, pick it up and, and make sure it gets taken care of. That, that memorial is not just for the people in Smyrna to enjoy and visit, and this letter shows you that you never know on any given day who will be there and how important it is to that person that's there. I can only imagine what this pilot, you know, must have been thinking, going through his mind, feeling to be there with a friend of his, a memorial for a friend of his that he flew missions with. So, it, it was, it was a very good letter and I appreciate her reaching out to me. I actually ended up speaking to her and her husband on the phone, so. Also, you mentioned early voting. Obviously, early voting starts tomorrow. Get out and exercise your, your right to vote. That's, that's why those of us that serve, serve, is so that we have the right to stay free and be free. And if you don't get out and vote and support or elect the people that support those ideals, then we may not have it. So, you, you need to get out and vote. Last thing is Kevin, my son, coming home tomorrow for a week. First time he's been home since February, so he's in for some surprises. I was just kind of thinking yesterday about all the things that have changed since he was here, and it's going to look a little different. Rocky Fork Road wasn't open, Eon Springs Road wasn't open. Sam, Sam really hadn't even started construction when he was here, so things are going to look a little different for him. So, I remember coming home when I was in the military and just being gone for a year or two, and when you come home and it's like, man, the town changed quick. So, for those of you that live here, it seems sometimes it's slow, but it's really not, so.
I just had an email from a young man who came home and actually graduated from the old Smyrna High School and had not been home since the school was not Smyrna High School.
Were the three of us old guys with it?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, we, we all went there.
We all went there. We didn't get to graduate from there, but we, yeah. But, I mean, that's what he was talking about. He was talking about how, how different the town is, but still felt that hometown feel, so he just wanted to give kudos to the council for all that they've done.
I actually heard somebody say something about when were they going to remodel or rebuild Smyrna High School, when I was thinking, they just did!
Yeah.
More?
Yeah, just speaking of hometown feel, it still feels like that to me, and so, just, again, I want to thank everybody for constant emails and texts and calls and things like that. It's really meant the world to me. On another note, Smyrna lost somebody recently, Bill Hayes, who was a State Farm business owner here in Smyrna. Bill was a very likable, wonderful man, ran a great business. Matter of fact, he was located almost across the street, just down a little bit, and so we're going to miss Bill. Bill was a gentleman and always had a encouraging and kind thing to say, so just want to say rest in peace, Bill, and to his family, our condolences and prayers.
Didn't live in Smyrna, but he always stepped up. It did not matter what event it was, he was always willing to, to jump in and be a part of.
Yeah, let me add to that. I'm remiss to have mentioned, Bill's neighbor, Rick Bratcher, Rick's Auto Sales, right next door to Bill, he also passed away this past week. His, for those guys in Smyrna that are car guys, he's, he's always kind of been in the car scene. He's, I've bought a '69 Camaro from him and I've sold and traded trucks with him many times, and he's going to be sorely missed. He was only 62, it looks like it was a heart condition, but Rick was a, a great guy. Anybody that knew him, he would tell you how much he loved the Lord and cars, and he would tell you almost every time, so.
Two good things.
Yes, but he would do it, he would do it without, without a beat usually every time.
So, a couple of things tonight. I think we've got a slide about early voting. It is tomorrow, starts tomorrow through the 29th, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturdays 8:00 to 2:00. Please remember to bring your state or federal government-issued ID when voting, and you can follow the signage to the rear of our building or you can enter the parking lot from Pinto Drive. Also, the Smyrna Library is hosting Halloween Bingo on the lawn Friday, October 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:30. This is an outdoor event and social distancing measures will be in place. The Smyrna Parks and Rec Department is hosting Sharp Screams Haunted Trail Friday, October 23rd and Saturday, October 24th. For more information, you can visit the Town of Smyrna Facebook page or call the Parks and Rec office. The Smyrna Parks Department is also seeking nominations for the Kenneth Coon Victory Lifetime Service Award and the Youth Leader Award. The link to the nomination forms are available on our website. And this is the final week for the SOAX Paddle Adventures Rental Program. The rentals are available from 9:00 AM to 3:30 PM through Friday, October the 16th, and 8:00 AM to noon on Saturday, October the 17th. You can call for reservations to rent the watercraft. Couple of items, one personal and two that were, took place in the town. Brian and I got to go to TCAT this past week and met with Trey Hargit, and we appreciate him coming to visit the town and getting to have a little conversation with him. We also did the ribbon cutting since we have been here last for Sterling at Stonecrest, which is a fantastic-looking property, so looking forward to that partnership. And last but not least, we celebrated Daddy's birthday on Friday. Daddy was 76, so happy belated birthday to Dad. He birthdied all week. Every morning, he would get up to go to the truck and he would have a card in the truck with either gift certificates or money or something. It does, it's birthday weeks in our family.
Y'all didn't put the skeleton in the truck?
You know what? That skeleton just shows up all sorts of places. Never know where that skeleton's going to show up, so. Anything else?
You got new glasses?
Do I have new glasses? Nope, mine aren't new. You just didn't notice them when I first got them.
True.
Okay, nothing else, then we are adjourned.